Okay, we've started the recording and started the streaming.
Okay, so we can get started. So I just need to read something regarding the the in-person meetings of the Finance Committee. So pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101 0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. On March 19th, 2020, President Levin issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, the Illinois Municipal Code, and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On May 29th, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a disaster proclamation that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 10 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as amended by Public Act 101 0640. In accordance with the Governor's disaster proclamation and the Village President's declaration of emergency, I, as Chair of the Finance Committee, hereby determine that in-person meetings of the Finance Committee are not practical or prudent at this time and entail further notice. Phil, I think you had to finish that with something?
I will, I will finish in, after we call the meeting to order and do the roll call.
Okay, so call the meeting to order and Phil, if you want to do roll.
Chairman Vrie.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
All members of the Finance Committee are present virtually, and I, as the Village Manager, am present in person here at the Village Hall in the Council Chambers. The building is available for individuals who may choose to attend in person, up to an additional nine people in this room, to a total of 10, including me.
Okay. And now, Jordan, did anybody write in with any public comments prior to the meeting?
Trustee Vrie, we did not receive any public comments this evening.
Okay. Some new public comment. And then, consideration of the minutes, move to, or looking for a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
We have, sorry, we have to do a roll call.
Oh.
Chairman Vrie.
Yep.
Trustee Miller.
Yeah.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, we can launch right into it. I think we've got a decently full meeting. So Nikki, if you want to walk us through the financial reports?
Yes. Sharon, I think I need to be able to share.
One moment, let me check that. Nikki, I just gave you host controls, so that should allow you to share.
Everyone see the screen, okay? Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, included in the packet this evening. Included in the packet this evening is the financial report for the month of May. Just a quick overview for tonight's discussion. We'll be going through the highlights for the general fund, water fund, the remaining funds and personnel, and cash flow projections that we have been revising over the last three months. And also, we'll touch on the property and sales tax rates of change. Those are still in progress. Just a few notes on the general fund. We are already several months into the year at a mile marker of about 25% of budget. As we've noted in months past, our property taxes are slightly lower than prior year. At this point, we're not concerned about that. I think this is still just a timing issue, and we should be able to catch up when the second installment hits later this year. Our income tax is still lower than the prior year, but it's at 32.6% of budget, which is higher than where we anticipated that we would be at this point in time. Based on Department of Revenue estimates, we still have about $1,200, or $1,200 a month in sales taxes that have been filed but not yet paid. So that number that has been delayed is fairly minimal considering what we're seeing in surrounding communities. But our sales taxes are still higher than last year at about 30% of budget. This is based off of February sales, so I should caution that those are early numbers before a lot of the financial impact of COVID-19 hit. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we're seeing as we move forward when we get into the cash flow projections. Our permit revenue is lower than prior year. That number stays fairly steady. We're at 22% of budget, which is much higher than what you might anticipate that to be. Total permits are $168,000 less than prior year, but building permits are only $50,000 less than last year at this time. And I know Dave Mao is going to say a few words about the permit activity that we are seeing right now.
Yes, we, this is Public Works Director Dave Mao. We, there's a, there's been a steady flow of various permit applications over these past three months. And most of those doing business with the Building Division have adapted to a digital permit process that we've implemented. We currently have 10 new single-family permit drawing sets that are in under review, and they're anticipated to be permitted in the next few months. That's a pretty steady number for this time of year. And we've got a handful of permits issued but have not been paid for and picked up their smaller projects. But all in all, considering the circumstance, the activity has been has been very moderate, not, not as light as we would have expected.
Moving on to the water fund. The water fund revenues are performing generally as, as expected. Both our volume metric and our fixed charge revenue at this point are running higher than prior year. Volume metric is at 29.7% of budget. Fixed charge is just, just below what we thought we would be. Part of the reason why these are outperforming last year is because of the rate increase that was implemented as part of the budget. And then also because we did have a one-time use of our interconnect with the Village of Northfield, and that increased our water usage on a one-time basis. In terms of our remaining funds, our debt service, capital fund, and MFT funds are all on track with budget year-to-date. The MFT fund received its first installment of the Rebuild Illinois grant funding that we had talked about last month. That was a receipt of $95,000. Over the next three years, we're expecting to see just over $574,000 in funding, and that will all be earmarked for the road program. In terms of salary, our personnel costs are at 31.3% budget, but a lot lower than prior year. This is largely attributable to a decrease in overtime. Part of the reason for this is due to COVID-19. A lot of employee vacations were suspended, which is typically a large driver of overtime in our public safety department. We also have not had any outside training in public safety, which is another driver of overtime. We do expect, as we begin to return to work, and employees do start taking vacations for that number to catch up quite a bit. But one thing I do want to point out with personnel costs is that they're also lower from last year because there are several positions that we continue to hold vacant. So although that salary number has gone up from the prior year, it is much lower than what it would have been otherwise had we been told staffed. Moving into cash flow projections. You'll notice from the packet and on the screen here that we have made some changes to the format of the report based off of the commentary from the committee last month. We've gone through the revenue section and added the budgetary numbers and the prior year numbers for each of these revenues. So we can see the comparison very clearly on this slide. And included in the report, there are several numbers that are highlighted in yellow. They're in red text. Those are numbers that we do have from the Department of Revenue already. So I mentioned earlier, when we talk a little bit more about sales tax, we do see that dip in the month of June in terms of what we received last year at about $157,000, and we're budgeting about $173,000. That fell short and came in at $116,000 in the month of June. So we'll continue to monitor this as we go forward. That is the point of this, you know, financial projection spreadsheet, so we can keep an eye on this as well. Income tax is coming in fairly steady still, pretty much right at where we were expecting in terms of budget and what we received in the prior year as well. Just again, looking at the format, we've updated these numbers to the month of May. So that's the area included in the outlined box there. And this entire screen doesn't have all of the revenues because as we were adding lines, I'm starting to run out of room a little bit.
Okay, just, just a quick question. So if I'm reading this correctly, just looking at sales tax, we're actually still projecting, even with the pandemic, to come in above budget?
We are still coming in. I think some of that was delayed. We moved the projections of sales outwards, and that may be part of the reason why this number went down because the Department of Revenue extended filing deadlines for a lot of the businesses to remit their sales taxes, which is delaying some of our collections. We only received the numbers for tax returns that had been filed but not paid. So it's hard to determine at this point what the cause of delay is. We certainly could adjust those numbers now, down. It's difficult to tell at this point. We're not sure how quickly we will be able to get that information from the Department of Revenue. But that is where we have it now. But we could certainly look at those numbers a little bit closer.
Up to you guys, I would just be surprised if you ended up ahead of budget on sales tax. And probably, well, maybe income tax would be fine. But just sales tax. I mean, you have to figure June is going to look terrible, which is what's in here. And I would expect July would look pretty bad, too. I mean, I don't think April had much activity. And maybe starting to see some improvement now in, in, in May and then June. But even, even that would just be still probably below what we would have expected.
We will take a look at those and revise those first.
I mean, it, it's okay, I just, I'd be surprised, so, anyway.
We are, continuing on this slide, we are also expecting, seeing a slight decline in our utility tax as well. We do believe that.
I'm sorry, Nikki, I just have, I have a question. I'm just struggling to understand something here. So it says in the sales tax category that we've assumed not only a delay but a 30% decrease in revenue. So, so those, that's, so that's the, the, the top group of numbers. The 180 in August, 128 in, or 128 in August, 135 in September. And then, the budget numbers, that's the budget that we approved, right? When, whenever we, in, in December, okay? And so, and we are not, so, so our projections are based on the 30% decrease in revenue that we're just taking a wild guess on. But we don't change, we're not, we don't change the budget because that's a fixed document. Is that the idea? Okay.
Correct, and we could amend the budget if we're fairly certain. I know, I could see Jonathan shaking his head. I think what's important to, to keep in mind is it might be a good measure to understand where we were projecting in terms of budget, what we were expecting, and then where our projections are and where the actual numbers are coming in, which is why we've left the budget, you know, kind of where it is. So we have that measuring stick of, here's what we were expecting to get in, and here's what actually came in. If we got into a dire situation where we really thought we were going to lose a lot of revenue, we certainly could amend the budget and make a formal statement that revenues will come in less, and then you would accordingly adjust expenditures as well. Right now, the direction we're receiving the board is to handle that essentially administratively.
Yeah, and there's so much, there is so much we don't know. I, I understand that. And, you know, things may surprise us because our, our economy isn't necessarily the same as everyone else's economy.
I also think you're doing exactly the, I mean, I think we should keep the budget as is, but you're doing a nice job with these adjustments as help to guide us through, even if we're not coming in according to budget. But I would much rather do that than actually amend the budget. Because like, like you said, it's nice to have a benchmark.
Any other questions before I move on? Just a few other items of note. Our use tax does continue to remain steady. I know that was a question at the last Finance Committee meeting. If we're starting to see receipts from the Wayfair decision, that revenue has remained steady. It is outperforming budget slightly. The Department of Revenue has not indicated that we'll be receiving any large, sharp increases in that revenue, so we'll continue to monitor that as well. As you may have noticed from the report, parking fees have essentially been non-existent due to COVID-19. So we are hoping within the next phases of reopening that we'll start to see that recover a little bit. Most recently, we have seen a fairly sharp decline in our vehicle license revenue as we start to butt up against that June 30th deadline. We have been starting to communicate to residents to remind them that they do need to purchase their, their stickers by that June 30th deadline. So hoping to see a little bit of a surge in revenue in that towards the end of the month. Also, if you notice from the financial reports, we did not receive an E911 surcharge payment. We were notified by the Village Glenview that state is running behind, but they did indicate that that payment is coming. So we will continue to keep an eye out for that as well. In terms of expenditures, we haven't adjusted for budget and projections and expenditures quite yet. We wanted to get the board's, or the committee's feedback on the format before we went full bore on the entire report. But generally, the expenditures are on track of where we would expect them to be. They are running below budget largely because of the list of expenditure cuts that we had made at the board's direction. So we do expect that to continue through the rest of the fiscal year. Moving on to the water fund. Water revenues are performing as expected, slightly higher than the prior year. We do have the projected receipt of bond proceeds that we'll be discussing at the Village Board meeting later this evening, targeted for an early July bond closing to provide a surplus or an influx of cash into the water fund. In terms of expenses, the water fund is trending below budget. That is expected based off of the reductions that we made earlier. And we do expect that to continue through the remainder of this year. We will start to see a large, larger increase in expenditures in context with the water replacement project. I understand there's additional discussions that we'll need to have the board in terms of timeline. Right now, we have a placeholder in July for purchases of meters to begin, understanding that that's projected and that can be adjusted as needed. And then the fuel tax fund. And again, this is in line with expectations we have outlined here in yellow. The receipt of the Rebuild Illinois funds, we are expecting to receive a second installment of those funds later this year. At some point, we will need to pass a resolution to expend those funds. But at this point, we think it's best to allow those to accumulate so you can do kind of a larger project, a larger road project, and recommend that to the board at a later date. And most importantly, all of this comes down to the bottom line in terms of cash reserves and what is available in each of these funds. We are still projecting that fund helds, and all of these funds will end the year in targets. As based off of the feedback from the committee last month, we did add just a little placeholder here to remind us that we did include in the stub year budget a placeholder for cash flow needs that will be required in January and February next year. So although we will end the general fund, we're projecting to end with $5.4 million in available reserves. We will be drawing that down again in January, February, before property taxes receipts begin in March next year. Okay. And the last thing I want to mention is we did talk a little bit about the rates of change graphs. We are working on developing those for some of our economically sensitive revenues. We have one for property tax and sales tax. Those were included in the packet, but we are still working through the format with President Levin. So I'm happy to answer any questions on those charts or any of the other items in the report at this time.
I don't have any questions if anyone else does.
No, I'm good.
No, thank you.
Shall we move on to CIP?
I'd like to hand it over to Denise because she's going to go through the CIP for you. I think you're on you.
Okay, can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Included in your packet this evening is the monthly report on the community investment program for stub year 2020. And I apologize, it's really small on your screen here, but it is included in your packet. The one item that I really want to highlight is, as was discussed at the May 6 special board meeting, a number of the capital projects have been delayed or reduced, and those have been included in the third column on the PowerPoint. A few items to note. We do have quite a few projects that are currently underway, such as, you know, the Tudor Court Streetscape, which is going to be completed in August. I think we're targeting August along with the commuter parking lot lighting improvements. Also underway is the parking system improvement project, which was scaled to be completed August of 2020, but that has shifted and is slated to go live January 1 of 2021. Things continue to move forward with ERP with hopes of the utility billing software going live August 1st. One project that is on this evening's Village Board agenda is the consideration of a resolution for residential concrete sidewalk and curb replacement for $50,000. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
No questions from?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah.
No questions, thank you.
Hold on, I can't remember what's next. And then do we, are we moving on to, what do we have next?
Budget schedule.
Budget schedule, yes. I'm sorry, I'm in trouble with my mouse. Okay, so included in, oh, one thing I wanted to note about Denise's report is that we were using, we've been able to use the new ERP system to help us generate that report now, which has been a nice streamlined process. There's been a good outcome of that already. Anyway, so moving on to the budget. Included in your packet is a draft budget schedule. It feels like we're still in the middle of audit, but it is time to talk about budget already. This is going to be a little bit of a tricky year. It should surprise no one. Information is changing so quickly, very rapidly, and it, and I don't think that anyone is very sure about how quickly or slowly the economy will recover and how far behind the government sector will be behind the public market. So what we proposed for you this evening is to essentially start this process internally with staff later this month to just start talking about the budget and taking a look at our strategic plan, how that's been impacted over the last three months, and just reprioritizing some of those things to make recommendations to the board of how to move forward. And then also, just in the month of July, start talking about the CIP list, looking through the departments. In August, we'll be starting to talk about financial policies and forecast assumptions along with the actuarial reports. And then ultimately, to have a goal of starting to talk about the actual budget itself within the month of September and have a similar workshop arrangement to what we had done in prior years. That leaves us a little bit more time, I'm sorry, that would be in October. And that leaves us the month of November for additional discussions, depending on what is happening at that time and any adjustments that we may need to make to the budget. Ultimately, with the goal of having a recommendation to the board for your consideration in December. So we would be presenting the entire budget, the property tax levy for your consideration in December, and that would kick off our first calendar year ever. Does anyone have any questions about the budget schedule or comments, suggestions?
This is just a running, it's never stopping.
Yes, it is. It is a never-ending process.
Then you start to do.
Yes.
Yeah. Well? Well, this, this was a short year.
Yes, it is a short year.
It does not seem like it.
That's.
It does not seem like a short year.
Correct.
That is true. So this, I'm just sort of looking at this calendar and realizing it is, we normally would approve, would have, under the old fiscal year, would have approved the budget in February, January or February, I guess. And we're doing it not that, not that much differently now. So are we leaving, did you backload the schedule? Are we leaving ourselves enough time, or am I remembering wrong?
I think it's, it's fairly similar in that, I guess there's, we would have discussed the budget in November with a formal presentation in December and approval in February. So what we're proposing, oh, yes, I'm sorry, January. Thank you. So what we're proposing. So what we're proposing is an October review with not a formal approval until December. So November would provide us that additional cushion, similar to how we would have done with the February year end.
Yeah, Barbara, I think with, with the last several fiscal years, the, the budget has been approved in January. So this, this is, it feels about the same because it's really not that far off from, from what we were doing. So we've talked internally and I think the development of the budget's going to be a little more complicated from the staff standpoint this year, which is why we're getting started pretty much in the next couple of weeks. But I think as Nikki's pointed out, with the additional time in November for the board to utilize the finance committee meetings and even if necessary committees of the whole or, or special meetings, I think we should probably be fine.
All right, well, and certainly, I mean, starting next month, it seems as if we're probably going to have some better information on the revenue side, and certainly by then we will.
I, I would comment that in effect, for the last several years, we really had come to agreement on what the budget should be by the end of December. And then we just formally approved it in effect in January or early February. So I don't know that this is so radically different from what we've done before. The biggest problem I foresee with all this is when we're going to figure out what the real revenue flow is going to be to the state.
That will be tricky. The good news is we have a little bit of a head start on projections because we have been doing that on a monthly basis. So, but we will, we will have to adjust that as we go along. That'll be a really tricky part of this. There's no additional questions on the budget. Move on to.
Okay.
And policies, I don't think anything, okay.
Yeah, let's move on to, yeah, investment policy.
Okay. All right, so included in your packet is a redline version of the village's investment policy. We're bringing this before you today to make a few updates, recommend a few updates for your consideration and discussion. And I have some folks joining us today. I know it looks like we have two Brian Hextalls. And I'll have them introduce themselves in a moment. But we have Brian Hextall, Eric Stoltz.
John Huber.
John? Oh, John, there you are. Okay, sorry, you're in a different screen than you were before. And John Huber from PMA. But just before I hand it over to PMA, I'd like to just go over at a high level a few notes on what type of changes that we're proposing for your consideration. It's really meant to be some house cleaning here. I think we understand generally that village investments must be relatively conservative. There's not much, anything in here that's much very crazy. We do have to follow my statute. So some of the things that we're requesting fair consideration are to adjust the collateral level to comply with current GFOA requirements, the Government Finance Officers Association, understanding that we are still in compliance with the Illinois Public Funds Management Act. Also allow for final maturities over five years and the durations not to exceed five years. And I'll let PMA go into that a little bit further. And then also the addition of language to allow for investments in accordance with the Illinois Sustainable Investing Act. This was an act that was signed into legislation by the governor earlier this year to encourage, to encourage local governments to make sustainable investments if it makes financial sense to them. So those are very high level, the types of changes that we're requesting here. So before I hand it over to PMA, are there any questions on the redline document or any of the changes that we're proposing this evening?
None, none for me. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, can I hand it over to you? You want to introduce your team and maybe if you have anything to add about the policy?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Nikki, and thank you to the finance committee for having us here virtually this evening. I wish we had the chance to meet you in person as this is our, our first time since being selected as the investment advisor to get to present to you all. So, you know, again, looking forward to meeting you all in person. I'm, I'm joined here today by Eric Stoltz, who's on our sales and relationship team in Illinois, as well as John Huber, who serves as our chief investment officer. I'm a portfolio manager, been with the firm for about 20 years and, and will continue to be your primary contact moving forward. So I think I'll hold off my comments on the investment policy until just a little bit later in the presentation. And I'll turn it over to Eric here at this time.
Are there slides to go along with this? I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Hello, everybody. This is Eric Stoltz speaking. Again, I'm part of the PMA Asset Management Team. Formally selected as prudent man advisors, we've since changed our name doing business as PMA Asset Management. We felt that was appropriate with changing of the times. So we do have a new name, new brand logo that we've implemented here over the last couple of months. So you're kind of getting the first look at it here, which is kind of nice. And again, I'm joined here with my colleagues, Brian Hextall and John Huber. We can go to the next slide here. So again, just a little, little background. We, we've gotten to know Nikki and Denise through the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association here over the last several years. When the RFP came up last year around this time, that's when we submitted our proposal, had some really nice discussions with Nikki and Denise. And we were selected based on all of our experience working with public fund entities here in Illinois. We're an investment advisor registered with the SEC FINRA, but we also specialize in this niche market, which is public fund investing. So here's some details on our firm. Just recently crossed the $10 billion threshold in assets under management, which is a nice, nice target to hit. And again, we're serviced out of Naperville, Illinois. We have over 140 employees with the firm, majority of them working in our Naperville office to really service all of our clients here in Illinois. And we manage over 800 clients across Illinois. So I think from here on, I'm going to pass on to Brian.
Actually, John is going to take over this one.
Oh, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, great. Thanks, guys. A pleasure to be here. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I had my headphones on and right when it went to PMA, those went off. So my computer is working and my ancient keyboard, great. Pleasure to be here with you all. Again, like Brian, want to echo comments, can't wait to meet all of you and, and look forward to serving you as fiduciaries for, for the village. Again, you know, one of the things that's critical, and I know we've got a short period of time here, is that, you know, from a philosoph, from a philosophical process, from a philosophical standpoint, the key thing that PMA really puts in place is a consistent investment process. We do all of our own internal research around the investments that we make for you. Really, our firm was founded in, on research and so it's foundational to what we do. We're risk managers. We understand how important this, these reserves are to you. We know how important it is that that money is safe and liquid when you need it. But we also understand you need to earn money. So we're, we're going to put a diversified portfolio solution in place. And over time, our goal is to obviously generate value added investment returns. So I think we're off to a good start here in the past, you know, six to nine months since we've gotten going. The next slide. Those, the people that are involved with the team. So again, myself, Brian involved. Dean Tobias is a senior portfolio manager and Brett Copeland as well. At some point, you might meet them as well. But again, I think Brian and Eric will be the people that you'll be working with most often. Next slide, real quickly, it's just to provide a market and economic update. If you go to the next slide, obviously, the big news is what's changed here in the last three months. And there's, you know, everyone is aware of what's happening. We're all operating, most of us are operating from our home right now. Some of us are at, at the office or council chair chambers. But, you know, a ton has changed and the challenges that we face right now are really unique versus other challenges that we face from an economic and market perspective. And I think first and foremost, you know, obviously we have a global health pandemic, right? And, and so this is somewhat new to all of us. And it's creating a global economic crisis. And obviously the resultant issues in the market is, are creating their own problems as well. And so if you think about what's happening, kind of everything happening at once, and let's not even get into social unrest and some of the other things that we've been seeing more recently. There's a lot of things that are changing. And as Nikki talked about earlier, not a lot of, nobody really knows exactly what's going to happen, right? And, and we don't either. But one of the things we know as a risk manager is that we, we look at data, we look at information and we stay on top of it because we work for you. And so if you look at these two graphs here, one of the things that, that has been interesting is if you were coming into early June, it looked like curves were flattening. But if you look at kind of global cases right now, they're, they're, they're moving at a, at a higher pace, even though in the US, things are starting to flatten. So this is definitely a, a source of concern for us. And one of the questions we ask is, you know, how does this story end? You know, we're ways away from a vaccine. And the impact that it's having on people is pretty massive. So behaviors could change, both in terms of our confidence to, to, to go forward and consume, even though we see some things that are very positive so far as the economy is opening up, but also for, for business investment, which is really important as well. But you have your own challenges. We just went through your finances, right? Things are changing. You're going to have to reprioritize things. How does this change the future path of the economy and the market? And, and we think it's something that, that is highly uncertain. So even though we're always cautious at PMA, we're extremely cautious right now. And, and we think it's warranted to be that way. So if you move to the next slide. Thanks Nikki or Jonathan, whoever's controlling it. Thank you. GDP, obviously, there's a lot of estimates of what's going on. Most recent first quarter GDP was down around 5%. You know, you've got estimates here of the second quarter GDP coming down 35%. You've got some people that are higher than that or lower than that. But full 2020 GDP expectations are around 6%. And globally, you're, you're seeing things that are, that are also, you know, suffering quite a bit. And the big story is jobs. And, you know, we've had, we've lost over 40 million jobs so far during this pandemic. And we don't, we do not believe that that's going to be easily recoverable. And because of that, one of the things that we're worried about obviously is where is demand and consumption as, as we move forward into the next, you know, several quarters. So if you go to the next slide, one of the things that's been most surprising so far during this has been how quickly this market has bounced back. And it's defied expectations, I think, for most people. It certainly defied my expectations because I'm very cautious and we're very cautious as a firm. But you can see the S and P 500, when we ran this on June 9th, was almost back to flat for the year. And if you think about where valuations were kind of coming into this crisis, things were relatively rich. And to think that all the equity markets have kind of come back to where they are. And you can see the NASDAQ, which is a tech heavy, are up that high, it's pretty surprising. One of the benefits that have happened obviously is fixed income prices have gone way higher as interest rates have remained lower. You'll see that in your portfolio when Brian talks about it. The Barclays US Ag is the broadest measure of fixed income. It's up 5.4% year to date. And so your ability to invest a little bit longer and get your reserves working for you a little bit harder has been a great strategy so far. And Brian will talk about that here in a little bit. So the next slide, you know, the Fed has been a really important component to this kind of relief rally, this bear market rally that's happened. They've, they've lowered interest rates, they've eased financial conditions. This has allowed corporations and governments, as you guys are well aware, municipal finance was broken as well. A lot of people that were expecting to bring, you know, municipal bonds weren't able to do it. And now you look at the market two months later and everyone's tripping over themselves to get to market, whether it's in the municipal side or the corporate side. And investors, institutional investors like PMA, working for clients like yourselves, those spreads or those differences between where you can invest in, let's say, a high quality municipal bond and a treasury bond, those spreads have gotten tighter and tighter. So it's a very, you know, it's, it's been a very positive reaction, but one that's perhaps maybe just a little overdone. If you go to the next slide, this really shows you what's happened to treasuries. The green line up top is where we were about a year ago. And the blue line is where we are today. The yellow dotted line is what the market is expecting on a one-year forward basis. You know, from our perspective, we think rates are really anchored on the front end. The Fed's been pretty clear, Chairman Powell, that they're going to keep rates anchored there. So we don't think that there's going to be a lot of opportunity or risk to have rates go materially lower or higher. But those intermediate and, and longer five-year, 10-year type of parts of the curve, that's really the area that we're watching the most. And we would expect that curve to, to get slightly steeper. So maybe five and 10-year rates to sell off slightly as we move further into, into the year. One thing for certain on the right is a measure of volatility. It's called the VIX index. Don't worry about what that means. It's basically stock volatility. But you can see how that spiked so dramatically in the first quarter as the reality kind of came to fruition and we've all been sheltering in place. We see how volatility's come back. We would expect vol to, volatility to come back again periodically over the course of the next several years. And so it makes sense for us from an outlook perspective to stay safe. So if you look at the next slide, you know, officially now, I think last week, it's been official. US and global recessions have begun, really started in February. One of the things that's super important as we manage your portfolio, it always is, is that security selection and asset allocation are key. Again, we have to remain high quality. We have to remain compliant with your policy and state statutes. We take that very seriously. And if we do take risk in any way, we're going to make sure we're very high quality. This is not a time at all to, to, to get fancy with anything. So really kind of down the middle of Fairway, 200 yards, you know, keep it safe, right? Let's, let's shoot for par and bogey. This is kind of where we're at right now because the world is so uncertain. Again, we talked a little bit about the Fed leaving things unchanged. One of the things that's important is how our behavior is going to change. We talked about that both at the individual consumer level, at the government level, at the private institutional level. It'll be interesting to see where demand and confidence is. But one of the things that really concerns us overall is just growing debt. We continue to fight our problems more generally by issuing more debt, whether that's the US Treasury or whether that's corporations or whether that's individuals. Debt is, seems to be in vogue and the answer. And as people who manage debt for a living, that concerns us. The amount of debt that we're doing is not going to help our future generations sustain the quality of life that we've been able to enjoy for much of the past century. And so it's something we're watching very closely. With that, I'm going to pass off to Brian. He can talk a little bit about what's going on in the portfolio, the, the important stuff.
Right, absolutely. And obviously, all the economic and market update is very important as well. And in all honesty, we, we, we think about this stuff and we talk about it every day. And while I'm, I'm sure it was apparent to you that our outlook for the future is not particularly rosy, we, you know, are, are fortunate, I think, that our clients deal in a very high quality part of the investment space. So what, you know, the news that we're bringing to our clients from a portfolio perspective has been very positive. As, as John mentioned, with interest rates coming down, you do have that inverse reaction for bonds and bond prices moving up. So returns last year is rates were moving down, were very strong. And, and that has continued this year with the, the emergency rate cuts from the Federal Reserve. So Nikki, if you could go to the next slide, we'll take a look. This is really a nice kind of dashboard of the entire portfolio. And I think it's probably for our first meeting here worthwhile to start in the bottom left corner and talk about the goals and objectives of this account. And again, this was something that we spoke with the team, Nikki and Denise, pretty extensively last fall as we were hired. And, and that was to make sure we understood very thoroughly what exactly it was that the village was looking for in their, in their investment portfolio. And of course, a high quality portfolio is, is at the top of that list. But we also want to be able to generate, generate some, some yield and some income. We want to do that in a, in a really well risk managed way. We want to do that in a, in a really well risk managed way, very much in line with the philosophy that, that John spoke to about our, our investment process. As far as duration, we identified that a one to five-year strategy was going to be best for the, the village. And we want to make sure that we do align the, the duration of the benchmark, I'm sorry, the align the duration of the portfolio with that of the benchmark. And finally, you know, we're nimble, we're going to, we're going to actively manage this portfolio to make sure we meet your evolving needs. You know, really interesting to hear the, the beginnings of the, the budget discussion and the planning that you're doing throughout the year. You know, we, we, we very much, you know, appreciate being part of these discussions and, and making sure that we're listening and, and not just doing all the, all the talking as we, as we have these sorts of meetings. So on the portfolio itself, the pie chart, you know, again, really high quality sectors of the portfolio, about 40% of the portfolio is in U S treasuries. We actually started off almost entirely in treasuries. And that's because they're the most liquid and available asset class in the market. So as we, as $5 million was transferred into this account, we wanted to get that put to work very quickly and get that duration profile in line with the benchmark. Over time, we've been allocating those assets into high quality income producing sectors that are allowable by statute. So kind of reading the goals and objectives there. But you'll see the, the largest segment of the portfolio, about 50% is in agency commercial mortgage-backed securities. This is a sector of the market that we think is very favorable for our municipal clients. You have the protection of high quality government agency securities. And then this commercial mortgage-backed sector is a little bit different than the residential mortgage-backed sector. With residential, we know that interest rates moving down, we're able to refinance our mortgages. It really a very low cost, so it's very effective and easy to refinance for commercial borrowers. And specifically, these are really apartment buildings for the most part. They have prepayment penalties on those. So we see a lot less early repayment activity. And keep in mind, as an investor, typically those prepayments happen just when you don't want them, right? Interest rates move down, people prepay, you get those funds back. So this, this commercial mortgage-backed security market, we think has a really nice balance of a little bit of additional yield over just buying treasuries. But yet not, not as much interest rate risk as you, as you might find in the residential MBS market. So the remaining 12% or so of the portfolio are in taxable municipal securities. And as you look at the two tables on the right, you can see the, the duration portfolios are pretty consistently about two and a half years. I should pause and always just remind everybody, duration is just our fancy word basically for time to maturity. Technically, it's a measure of, of interest rate risk. But again, we're, we're very much in line with that, the benchmark. And the table in the bottom corner, we always want to be highly transparent here, show how we're performing relative to the benchmark. You can see very, very high quality portfolio, similar duration. We, we are lagging, the, the benchmark is just a touch short of the benchmark. And the one change to the investment policy that Nikki mentioned of removing that hard limit of a five-year maturity and, and, and adjusting that to a, a five-year duration is the, is the longest security length will allow us to buy, you know, here and there, a, a security that might be just barely over five years or maybe six years. We're not going to buy a lot of that because it would be outside of the benchmark. But when, when we put these hard and fast rules of five years exactly, sometimes that drops some securities out of what we're available to, to purchase. Finally, on the yield front, we have a nice 44 basis point advantage over the, over the benchmark. Our, our goal over time is to generate a return that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 basis points over the, over the benchmark. So we think that the, the income profile of the portfolio has us positioned well to achieve that goal. Moving on to the next slide. As you can see, this is probably going to be a shorter slide here. I know we're, we're probably going a touch long, but you know, that, that duration profile I mentioned is laid out here. When we talk about a five-year portfolio, I always want to remind people that that doesn't mean that every security in the portfolio goes to five years. Most of these securities in fact are, are one to two years with, with some more out there in the, in the two to five-year range. And let's go on to the next slide. This shows how the composition of the portfolio has changed month by month since we got started in October. As I mentioned, we started off almost entirely in treasuries. And as we're able to find value in the market, we're slowly adding to those sectors of, of the agency mortgage-backed securities as well as those taxable municipal securities. So you know, we're not just going to go and buy a bond because it's in the market. We're, we're doing our research, we're making sure that the valuation makes sense and that we think that we're adding good value to our, our clients' portfolios. So let's go on to the next slide, getting to returns. Obviously the most important part, and, and one thing that I'm sure you're going to, is going to strike you here is that our, our since inception returns and year-to-date returns are both lagging the, the benchmark. There's really two reasons driving that, aside from it just being a newer account. And, and sometimes it takes a little bit of time to get in line. But those other two reasons are one, we have been a little bit short of the benchmark and with interest rates moving down, that, that did hurt us a little bit. So again, that investment policy change, we believe is going to be helpful there. And then this year, obviously the very volatile markets, we really saw credit spreads widen out significantly, even for the very high quality assets that we're buying with these agency securities and municipal securities. Even these high quality securities saw credit spreads wind out. And as those spreads wind out, that puts some downward pressure on, on security prices. So we, you know, the, the first quarter definitely saw a, a, a lag behind the benchmark. But if you look quarter to, quarter to date, that's the piece of good news here. You can see we are exceeding the benchmark by just about 40 basis points. We're finally getting back into kind of a normal I don't know if it's a normal market yet, but this is kind of getting in, at least from a returns perspective. This is where, you know, we expect to be over time. So we'll, we'll be chipping away at those, at those negative numbers on the excess returns. We have all the confidence in that is again, we have a portfolio that's, that's generating good yield. That over time is going to generate, you know, really strong returns for the, for the village. And with that, I think of one more slide I'll touch on. Nikki already went through some of the highlights to the policy. It really didn't sound like there were many questions. Certainly, you know, the, the thing that I'd probably most highlight is that, that maturity information as well as the, the statutory change that, that adds the Illinois Sustainable Investing Act. That's really ESG, environmental, social and governance type issues. That's something that we've integrated into our, our research process. We also have added a, a benchmark of that one to five-year treasury and agency specifically for the reserve portion of the portfolio. As, as you flip through there, I, I tried to add a couple of notes as I worked together with Nikki and Denise on, on making these changes. So again, happy to answer any questions, whether it's on the, the economy, the market, the portfolio or the, the investment policy.
So I, I have a question, just, I think this is investment policy related. And maybe in there, sorry if I missed it. Do we have limits in terms of how much you can have in each type of, of bond? So do you have freedom to go to 70% mortgage backs or?
Yeah, the, the only area under statute as well as your investment policy that has that limitation is there's a 33% limit on corporates. As you can see, there's actually no corporates in the, in the portfolio. Last year when we got started, corporate spreads were very, very tight. We had no interest in purchasing those securities. Basically what it boiled down to. And this year with the, you know, the trouble in the market, we, we again, don't feel like it's the right time. So that, that's really the one area. I, I can assure you that as we're looking at sectors like government agency bonds, we're, we're building a lot of diversification into the, into the portfolio. That's a lot of securities that comprise that underneath that, there's a lot of mortgages. And, and at the end of the day, you have government agency risk there. So certainly be open to conversation on that. But I, I would say that the policy is very much in line with, with state statute as well as other policies we see around those states.
There is Jonathan, if I can just jump in here, Brian. There is a section on diversification that does prohibit. You, we cannot invest more than 50% of the village's total investment port- portfolio in a single security type. So that was as specific as that, as we thought in terms of diversification.
In a single security or in a single, did you take type?
Security type. Or, and I guess I should say a single security type or with a single financial institution.
I mean, treasuries. Because I just, you know, want to stress that reaching for a couple of extra basis points is not worth it for this money. So, you know, be careful. You know, extending duration, buying mortgage backs to get an extra 15 basis points isn't, isn't worth it.
So one of the things that's, one of the things that's important is, is to get this kind of feedback in terms of where you, you, you know, you want to be. And, and you know, we customize to each of our clients. I, I think when you look at, you know, specifically Fannie and Freddie, which are the two agencies that we work with that are effectively under receivership by the U S government, right? They're full faith and credit and these are bullet securities, just like a U S treasury. And obviously, you know, diversification is critical. So if you look at each individual bond, you know, outside of U S treasuries, you're looking at generally, you know, a, a couple of percent in each of the individual bonds. So you're very diversified and it's well ladder, things are maturing. You move out the ladder, you keep it going. So we, we understand that thought and we appreciate, you know, this opportunity to, to get feedback from you.
Why, why do you think that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are backed by the U S government when they're not?
Well, they effectively, you know, are, you know, from a practical perspective, they've got, you know, direct lines with the treasury. They've also got, you know, they've also got, you know, specific, you know, securities that, 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 you know, that are backed by collateral as well. So you've got kind of dual kind of coverage there. And if you look at kind of how Fannie and Freddie are, are, are may be managed right now, they're effectively, you know, government guaranteed for all practical purposes because, you know, they're so important to the economy, right? And they haven't been able to privatize that, that, that market in any way. And they're not going to take all the Fannie and Freddie debt that have been out there and all of a sudden just release that because it would create a crisis that would make the current crisis look like a, like a dream. I don't know, do you have other thoughts there?
My thoughts there are that in the last downturn in 2006, people made the same speech you made and a lot of them went bankrupt as a result of it because the government was very slow in helping them. And the collateral turned out not to be worth as much. And if you take a look at things that are being put into their debt structure now, including the fact that Congress still requires a fairly high amount of unperforming materials. I don't have the, the confidence in them that you do.
There were no Fannie or Freddie securities that were guaranteed that actually lost money or principal. There were no defaults on any Fannie Freddie debt in the last crisis or ever.
Yep, but they didn't get held responsible for all of what happened to the things they sold.
There's moral hazard. There's no doubt there's moral hazard risk in the market. Absolutely. I completely agree with you, Lawrence.
Okay.
Certainly equity holders did, did experience some losses, but not, not the types of securities that we're investing in. The, the debt securities all held up. And you know, there, there's been this implied guarantee of Fannie and Freddie for a very long time. And it really, if anything, the financial crisis proved out that, that was very much there because the government did come in and bail them out. So yes, moral hazard risk for sure, but as far as credit risk, the, you know, the government was right there to support the mortgage market. And while they continue to talk about the privatization of these three entities, the political reality is that, you know, it's something that's going to require a lot of, a lot of support. And we're, we're already seeing that in this, in this latest crisis that we're, that we're experiencing. Because once again, there's, there's a lot of relief for, for mortgage holders.
But that's a, that's a pretty good political risk because for the government to come in and bail them out as they did again, depends on who's the president of the United States and who are in the Congress. It's not a guarantee. It's a question of what is the political situation then? And if you look at the present federal debt and the situation's going on, I don't know that the federal government will do what it did last time.
I think one of the practical things when you, I mean, these are all absolutely fair, creative conflict, we, we do it all day long. So I absolutely, these are fair questions. And I think when you think about Fannie and Freddie, I think one of the things that to the extent there's a change at some point in the future, if there's a better model, I think what, what'll end up happening is I think the securities have been issued before we grandfathered in and effectively, you know, put on the balance sheet of the U S government. And that's effectively how Moody's and S and P think about it too. That's market consensus. That doesn't mean everyone's going to be right. Things change and politics are, are in motion as we know. So obviously these are things that we think about. One of the things we like about these two is not only is it a guarantee, explicit guarantee from the entities themselves, but each of the underlying credits we look at as well. And so we underwrite each of the underlying credits as well. So we, it's kind of a double, double protection, which we like versus just, you know, unsecured debt. And you get good income characteristics as well, and they're very liquid. So, you know, it's been a good thing for public entities and, and, you know, knock on wood, we hope that, you know, future, you know, future, you know, presidents and, and leadership continue to, you know, make the right choices in that regard. So time will tell.
What concerns me with the, the mortgage-backed securities is a systemic problem that not, not the one that happened in 2008, but some other one that we haven't seen or imagined yet. And so while I understand that with, within that category, you're diversified and you've, you've looked at the specific investments and, and found them to be strong. How do you address the systemic risk, the potential systemic risk?
Are you thinking about interest rate risks? What kind of systemic risk?
I mean, I guess I'm, I am thinking about 2008 where, you know, the, the assumption was that, hey, we've got, we've got underlying mortgages all over the country and, you know, et cetera. And then we found that, well, the problems that happened, they happened all over the country. So, you know, so a lot of investments went, went very, very far south. So very few people anticipated that. And I'm wondering what else could happen that might affect these, these more commercial mortgage-backed securities that we haven't thought about. And therefore doesn't that make it not a diversified investment?
Well, from that perspective, if you think of, of what happened in 2007, 2008, the Great Recession, it was really the non-agency. Go ahead. Did you have a question? I didn't mean to interrupt. It was a non-agency mortgage problem. So what ended up happening is you ended up having a lot of mortgages that were being underwritten against really bad underwriting criteria, criteria or no criteria. So it's really the non-agency mortgage space and specifically the single family mortgage space where there were excesses that specifically people and investors, you know, not government or public investors like yourselves, but private investors and retail investors got hurt with primarily, primarily. That was where the primary issues were. Really wasn't in the agency space or in the treasury, kind of high quality government space at all. But from a systemic perspective, you know, from an interest rate risk perspective, these are going to act just like, you know, a regular, you know, corporate or treasury corporate agency bond. It has no maturity, it has a fixed coupon. They can't extend, they can't shorten. They're, they're, they're very kind of safe, stable securities. Through the last crisis, through, through 2001, through 2002, through 1998, through 1993, you know, that has been an area where the market's been very, very safe. And you can still get that agency protection and liquidity and, and, and income that you desire.
What, what, who is it that, whose underlying mortgages are you relying on? Would you mention the underlying mortgages?
Sure. Yeah. So in, in many cases like Brian talked about, and Brian, you can, you can might be able to take this one. A lot of them are multifamily obligors. So many of them underneath it all have loan to values of, you know, 50 and they've got debt service coverage ratio. you know, fifty and they've got debt service coverage ratios of, you know, one and a half or better. And again, each of those underlying credits we underwrite in research in and of themselves, even though the agency guarantee is, is really what we're relying on.
Yeah, but economists feel that multifamily dwellings are at high risk. If you look at the possibilities of what could happen over the next two years to the economy and especially the failure of the economy to perform as expected earlier next year and early 2022. So I would not have great faith in anything backed by multifamily properties with long-term mortgages in a place where they may not be able to generate the income to even maintain those mortgages and go bankrupt. I wouldn't be happy with commercial long-term properties, given exactly what's happening now with shifts away from retail, et cetera. And so I'm not sure why you think the underlying securities are valuable. I should say safe at the moment. The lessons of the last three major recessions would indicate that's a dangerous assumption right now.
Yeah, you know, let, let me jump in. I, John's talked a fair amount. I mean, first of all, I, I definitely want to say, I mean, we, we don't want to, you know, invest in anything that you're not comfortable investing. And, you know, we do believe it's a high quality asset class or, you know, kind of defending it here. But, you know, I, I'd like to probably have a more detailed discussion on this, but you know, the, the other thing that I would point out here to continue to make our case for these asset classes that, you know, it's good to be a bank, basically. And effectively, when you're buying a mortgage backed security, you're buying a bank. And, and that's because on your house, you know, that they want twenty percent down. And on a commercial mortgage backed security, they want forty percent down. So it, it would take, you know, giant decreases in the value because even in that worst case scenario where, you know, the mortgage payment isn't able to be made, the bank, or in this case, the mortgage backed security, security has that, has that collateral. So, you know, a big shock of the financial crisis was, you know, there was this, this label that, you know, housing prices couldn't fall by, you know, nationally by some X percent. And, you know, people had levered up and taken a lot more than, you know, they weren't putting, everyone wasn't putting twenty percent down on their houses. It was the ones that there was only one or two percent down, or in fact, the value of the mortgage was higher than the home to start with because people were, were borrowing against their house. So, you know, that's all very different. That's the other types of asset classes that John was talking about. We're talking about conforming mortgages, meaning mortgages that are able to be bought by the government agencies. They have, you know, quite low, low loan to values. And again, it's, it's good to be the bank because even when you and I can't pay our mortgage, the bank gets the collateral. So I don't mean to say that tongue in cheek or, or make light of it because, you know, we saw that happen 10 years ago and it was really quite sad for many Americans, but as an investor, it, it definitely adds a lot of confidence. Again, we don't want to push anywhere where you don't want to be here. So.
Yeah, can I, can I add something quickly?
Yeah.
So I think some of what, I, I think this is part of the investment policy conversation is credit quality, types of bonds. What sort of limits do we want to put on you? Because ultimately, we're hiring you to make the decisions. We have hired you to make the decisions. And, you know, I think what we want to make sure is that our parameters are appropriate. That mortgage backs, if mortgage backs are going into the portfolio, fifty percent may be too high for us. I mean, I think we haven't really had that conversation about how much of a certain asset or security type comfortable with, but making sure that the parameters what we're comfortable with is how we can sort of not go back and forth in terms of what we think about an individual security, not an individual security, but a type of security, just limiting the amounts that we have in different types of securities. So, and I don't see, maybe I missed it again. And I tried to get through everything, but I might have missed some things in the investment policy. I didn't see anything about credit quality or how you're judging credit quality based on each individual security or overall the security type. But so I think some of the things that might help would be credit, you know, what are, what are the, what are the parameters that you're looking at, say, within when it comes to each individual security by, what are the bigger parameters when it comes to how much we can allocate to different types of securities? And what's our overall view? Can we have a, you know, is this, I'm, I'm, I don't think it is, but I'm saying like, could we go down to a single A rating for the overall portfolio? Or I, I'm just using that as an example where we wouldn't want to, but even a double A, maybe that's too low. Maybe you want a triple A. I mean, the only way to, you know, Larry's opinion about what may happen with, with commercial real estate space is one thing, and maybe we're not willing to take the risk. Maybe we only want to focus on treasuries and triple A rated corporates. I'm not, I, I don't necessarily think that's the case, but perhaps we can talk about the parameters with which we want to invest the money. And just make sure that we're comfortable with those. And then maybe it becomes a little easier. Then we can have, you know, conversations about what we think to challenge what you guys are thinking. So we understand how you're investing. Hopefully we've given you, you know, the framework. So you're investing in according to what we're comfortable with.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'd be happy to take another look at the policy. I mean, generally, when I, I, I would say that, like I said, it was a good policy to start off with. I, I don't like to go in with a hatchet and make a ton of changes, but as John mentioned, getting this sort of direction is, is really helpful because now we know that you are looking for a policy that has some more, you know, depth to it basically. And we can definitely add, add that sort of, and, you know, again, not, not, not just we add it, but we'll work closely with, with staff to make sure that we're, you know, building this out in a way that aligns up with what has been discussed here this evening.
And if, if I could, just, just to go back to Jonathan's earlier point, given the size of a particular investment and, you know, getting, I think Jonathan's phrase was a few more basis points out of it to, but taking on more risk that at the end of the day, it's not just a statistical thing about the number of basis points over a benchmark. It's okay. What are the gross dollars net of fees and all that? That hit the bottom line. And is that worth the risk for particular investments? And, and that's the thing I think that Jonathan, I think I got all my words in his mouth, was part of that initial focus. And then you overlay all the rest of the discussion on top of it, but thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Appreciate it.
Can I introduce myself? Well, guys, thanks, PMA for the presentation. I am not on the task force of the, the finance committee, but I am a trustee and I serve on the sustainability task force. I only attend these meetings when there's a mistake on my calendar and I think I'm supposed to be here. So I, I do show up occasionally. And what I'd like to say here is to one, encourage the, our, our finance committee to consider socially responsible investments. And also here, if I have the chance, if it can be done in a, in a short statement or two, how a PMA would, would integrate financially responsible and socially responsible investing for Glencoe. If you think those things are compatible. And, and again, I'll encourage our finance committee to, to give that some thought, please. That's all I've got.
You know, I, I would, I would, you know, encourage, th- this is something we could have a, another kind of hour long discussion for, for sure. But kind of in a nutshell, I think one of the things for the committee to start thinking about is just the differences between what's being required under state statute, which is sustainable investing, which basically means integrating new risk factors into the research process. So, well, we've always thought about risks around, you know, maybe a, a, a car company that's polluting too much or something like that. We're building the structure into the process so that it's, you know, very much like thinking about earnings and liquidity and all the things that we typically talk about as credit analysts. You know, add, adding in a more organized way, thoughts around, around basically new risks. And, and those come in a number of different forms. So there's a, there's a difference in that. There, there's overlap for sure, but there's a difference between that and socially responsible in- investing. Because socially responsible investing kind of goes a step further down one part of that ESG to, you know, it, it can mean all sorts of different things, basically. And, you know, I'm, I'm kind of interpreting you out to the X degree. So excuse me, I don't want to mis, misstep, but, you know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of in-between between putting in place a, a process that helps think about additional risk factors versus only investing in, in certain sectors of the, of the market because of the, you know, various goals. So, you know, if, if we want to go more in that, that direction, direction that Peter's talking about, you know, that, that's something that we would want to put again, a, a lot of thought into and how do we want to proceed? I, I don't know, John, would you, what would you add to that?
Well, I mean, first and foremost, you need to know that PMA, I mean, ESG is, those considerations are absolutely considered within our investment process today for you. And if you think about ESG, I think it is different than socially responsible investing. And it's important because, you know, really analyzing the risk and, and opportunities that are important. It's, again, it's research based. It's, it's a component that we talk about. We talked about it today at our two o'clock credit meeting. You know, it's values neutral. So it's not a right or left thing. It's not a political issue. It's really trying to focus on the things that are important around sustainability and, and, you know, and environmental issues and governance, which is one of the most important things we can think about. Back to our discussions before around Fannie and Freddie and other things. So really, really important. I, it focuses on financial materiality and, and the market impact. It reframes lots of things that in the past were perhaps more screens. And, and it gets out of the things that are really important. It's additive to the research we've always done. It doesn't supersede that research and it's a way to really be responsive to the broader stakeholder interest, including obviously your own and, and taxpayers. So, ESG is integrated into our research process. And to the extent there's things that we need to do to articulate that in a more full way within your policy, you know, Brian, myself, the whole team, Eric, we can work with you guys on that. But it's, it's something we believe in at PMA and it's something we practice.
Can you, can you show us some examples of other, other funds that you manage that have incorporated something in their policy statement? So I assume you guys probably have seen lots of these things. Something that would seem to fit with our sustainability goals and socially responsible goals, while also fitting with our conservatism and the types of investments.
You know, I think one thing that would help is the, the state, in addition to kind of the, the short piece of language that we added into the investment policy, we could go into additional detail because they laid out, I think, five key areas where, you know, basically the ESG type, type factors and what those meant. So I think articulating more clearly in the policy, you know, it's not going to be everything. It's not all inclusive, but at least from a high level, these five broad areas that are being considered. I, I think that may give the committees some comfort that, you know, some more, give some more specifics basically around the types of things that we're thinking about. So I've got a note jotted down to add a little more depth to the, to the policy in that area as well for your, your consideration.
I, I have to admit, I missed because my computer or whatever failed. So I did not hear the discussion of social things. But I would want to make sure that there is not one ounce of reduction in financial protection to the extent that we take into account social things. So that I would not be at all in favor of us looking at things that would reduce our protection. These are the revenues that are generated by the taxpayers of the village of Glencoe. And we're not at liberty to take risks with them except to do the, the type of policy that makes sure we don't lose the money.
Yeah, I, Larry, I think that's very much what we all want. To make sure that the credit is still the highest quality, that we're still extraordinarily comfortable with the types of investments. But it does mean we can avoid ones that don't fit with the socially responsible side of things. Doesn't mean we have to lighten.
Correct. There should be ample numbers that are within that category that have the highest level of protection.
Yeah.
Yeah. In no, in no way does the, does the new legislation allow for anything new to be invested in that wouldn't have otherwise been allowed under the statute. It's, it's really about limiting risks. And, and that's what's built into our process. It's a, it's a risk mitigation tool, definitely not a risk addition.
But.
Jonathan, if I may ask Brian or John, can you talk a little bit about statute and what type of restrictions exist that we are able to invest in, whether or not that talks to credit quality at all?
So in the, you know, there was a question earlier about what sections of the policy have credit limitations. Definitely in the corporate section, there's a requirement that securities be in the, I think it's the three highest classifications. Yes. In the municipal section, and we will spell that out, there, there's also some language in state statute that talks about ratings for municipal securities. And and really those are the two classes that have credit risk under statute because you're, pretty much what you're allowed to buy is treasuries, agencies, corporates and municipal securities. So, you know, those, those latter two have, and I'm sorry, and deposits of course as well, but for the most part, deposits are required to be fully collateralized by government securities. Basically, one of the treasuries, agencies or municipal securities. So, you know, that, that's, that's what's in the act and, and as well as what's in, in policy. But, you know, here again, I think we can, you know, there, there's plenty of policies out there and we've got, I mean, I've read, literally, I've probably read hundreds and hundreds of investment policies all around, all around the country, more than I care to ever think about. But so I've got a lot of different things I can draw on to Jonathan's point in terms of, you know, having seen a number of these. I mean, absolutely. And I, again, I didn't want to go making major changes to the policy. But again, with this direction, we can, I mean, not that there can be major changes, but, you know, definitely adding some, some heft, I suppose, to, you know, the, the, you know, laying out those risk mitigation in terms of asset class exposure and, and ratings to be just a little clearer than what's in the policy now.
It all makes sense. That sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you, guys. It's appreciated. It's good to meet you via phone or Zoom or whatever we're on. So we look forward to working with you.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, Brian. Jonathan, is it fair to say that we can take a look, incorporate the committee's feedback and then bring some suggestions back to you next month?
Yeah.
Well, we will get to work and I'll echo John. I mean, great, great to see everybody's faces here and we'll, we'll look forward to sometime in the, in the future where we all get to meet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it, isn't it? Anything else? Any other, anybody that anyone wants to discuss? If not, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So we, we stay on now, right? And everyone else will just show up presumably?
Yep, this is the same. We'll be on the same Zoom.
Okay. There we go.
I have a quick comment. You know, Zoom has a, has the process where you raise your hand. There's a button, you raise your hand. I mean, you want to make a comment. Might be better than piling in. Just an idea.
I've, I've never used it in any of my meetings. I have one time when someone brought it up in another venue, heard that it's, it's hard, it's hard to see that the person who would be doing the responding to those hand raises can't, can't see whatever it is that shows up. So I don't know if, if you guys who run meetings have more experience with that.
I've, I've had a fair amount of experience because I've had the pleasure of attending. thousands of virtual meetings and I don't think that really works well. Because, because the person controlling the meeting has issues with it. And when you have a large number of people, it's very hard to have all of the stuff displayed where you want it and to handle it.
Sure. I would imagine it's very large, but a group like this, pretty manageable. You open up your window on the right-hand side to show the panelists and it's pretty obvious, a big red, a big blue hand.
Yeah. You know, rather than, than circling round and round, what happened in this particular meeting was Nikki was the host and she was also the presenter. So she didn't see the hand. I think President Levin's point is, is well taken, but staff generally manages the meeting a little bit differently than that. So apologies that, that you raised hand. I saw your raised hand, but I'm not the host, so I couldn't call on you. And that, that all being said, when we're generally in a, a normal meeting setup, we had a couple of, of control issues that at the beginning of the meeting, we, we made some quick changes. So normally we'll, we're more capable of, of seeing a raised hand and we'll, we'll utilize that to the best of our ability.
Yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to raise the problem from the last meeting. I had, I had no issue with that. I realized there was no protocol for it. I was just suggesting it might be good going forward if we want to put in place the, somebody who's watching for that. It could help facilitate the conversation. It's not, it wasn't a comment that the last one, you know, that I'm complaining that you didn't see my hand raised, that we've never talked about it before. So it's just a suggestion, if we want to use that feature, it's, I find it very useful and has been helpful to me. But if we don't, if the rest of you don't like that, then, you know, so be it. I'll, I'll stand down.
In any event, I think the president should call the meeting to order because we're sort of in between meetings and we're gathered together as a, we don't want to violate the open meetings.
Good. Let me call the meeting to order, please. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual, virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one room. On March 17th, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency pursuant to the authority granted by the Village Code, the Illinois Municipal Code, and the Illinois Emergency Management Act to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On May 29th, 2020, Governor Fritzker issued a disaster proclamation that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 10 people at regular public meeting locations to be impractical in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as amended by Public Act 101-0640. On June 15th, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the village's Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time until, and until further notice. In accordance with the governor's disaster proclamation, my declaration of emergency and my recent determination regarding meetings of the Village Board of Trustees, I, as president of the Village of Glencoe, hereby determine that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees is being conducted virtually with members participating through Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Corrali is in the boardroom as required by the Vote, Open Meetings Act. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
Thank you. As noted, today's village board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page in compliance with state law and as the village continues to support social distancing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. Before we begin the formal business of the agenda, I would like to ask village attorney Steve Elrod to underscore the legal basis for holding a virtual meeting and to add whatever he thinks needs to do to fix up the statement I made.
President Levin, there's not much to add. Your statement was excellent. And you noted that tonight will be, is the first night, we've been holding virtual meetings, but tonight is the first night that we're holding the meeting pursuant to the newly enacted state legislation, amending the Open Meetings Act. Previously, our authority derived from the governor of Illinois' emergency declaration and emergency order. The difference is, the differences are minor, but there are a couple that you should be aware of. One is that we must have somebody, either a member of the public body or the village manager or the village attorney, those are the three specified in the statute, present at the village hall during the, the, the meeting. So that if members of the public do come by the village hall, they'll know that there's a meeting going on. Right now, we're operating under phase three of the Illinois response to the coronavirus pandemic and gatherings of more than 10 are prohibited. So no more than 10 people could gather at the village hall, even if they wanted to and they, they did stop by. If we move into phase four, I should say if and when we move into phase four, that that number goes up to 50, we'll still have a limit on the number of people that could gather at the village hall. And it's likely that there will still be social distancing requirements. We'll have to deal with that at the appropriate time. But, so that, that first requirement is that somebody be present. The second requirement is that the village president or the head of the public body make a determination that meetings are not feasible in person. And the village president, as you indicated, did this earlier. That will also apply to any subordinate commission or board of the village of Glencoe. The heads of those bodies will be able to make a similar determination for their respective boards or commissions. And we have determined that the village manager will have the ability to delegate to the appropriate staff liaison to be the individual who is present at the village hall for plan commission or, or ZBA meetings that may occur as we move forward. Finally, the other key element is that all votes going forward must now be by roll call vote. Voice votes are not permitted under this new procedure that has been amended, adopted by the Illinois, by the state legislature. Any questions? I'm happy to respond.
Okay. If there are no questions, what I would like to do at this point in time is go over the basic concepts of how we conduct these meetings, which I do at the beginning of each of these virtual meetings. And I ask each member of the board and staff to mute, mute your lines if you are not speaking and unmute your lines when you do speak. This helps to minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. Members of the public should not share their video. To turn off your video, click the video camera button at the bottom of the screen so that the button turns red. After each agenda item is presented, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments. I will call the trustees in alphabetical order. As required by law, I will ask for a royal, roll call rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. Tonight, before we start the business of our meeting, I wanted to share a brief statement. In the aftermath of the tragic death of George Floyd, the people of Glencoe have come together with others around the country to articulate unequivocally that hate has no place here or anywhere, that acts of racial injustice and violence are abhorrent and must stop. The feelings of anger, sadness, indignation, and hopelessness linger, but they have been joined by a feeling of purpose, drive, and vision for a changed world, one where hatred, violence, bigotry, and institutional racism are eradicated from our daily lives and the lives of those most negatively impacted by these social failures. In a written statement I released a few weeks ago, I discussed our community's long commitment to acceptance and equality, touching on our welcoming and inclusive community pledge that our board adopted in 2017. I outlined our public safety department's training and their mission, which is to protect and serve all with dignity and respect. Most importantly, I noted that while we have taken many positive steps throughout our history in Glencoe, to foster acceptance and equality in our community, we must not stand still. Indeed, there is work still to be done. We have started to take some steps and will continue to do so. Our staff, particularly our village manager and director of public safety, have already begun not to speak, but rather to listen to voices in our community, including those of our clergy and other cultural institutions, in order to better understand concerns and fears and to gather feedback on where we can do better, where we can refocus our efforts as a government and as a community in order to foster a more inclusive environment. Next week, our community relations forum will meet for the first time of what I expect will be numerous meetings, so that the listening that's already started may continue and ultimately turn into dialogue that encompasses the village board and me, our staff, advisory commissions, cultural and civic organizations, and our community as a whole. For those of you that may not know, I think it important to provide some context as to the purpose of the community relations forum. This advisory commission to the village board was created many years ago for the purpose of ensuring that through community dialogue, we might focus our efforts on ensuring that discrimination and bigotry, racism, and bias not take root in our community. In fact, I'd like to read the municipal code reference, which outlines the purpose of our community relations forum very specifically. Quote, "The forum is being created in recognition of the village's commitment to foster and maintain a strong sense of community among all Glencoe residents and to acknowledge the value of diversity within the Glencoe community. In furtherance of this purpose, the forum shall promote and further the village's strong public policy against discrimination, bigotry, and bias in any form, and shall encourage mutual respect, cooperation, tolerance, and understanding among those who live, work, visit, or do business in the village, regardless of race, color, sex, age, religion, disability, national origin, marital status, parental status, military discharge status, social economic status, sorts of income or housing status." Unquote. I believe the community relations forum has been and can be a force for change in our community. And along with our many cultural, civic, philanthropic, and government partners, Glencoe can discuss and build plans to address issues of racism and hatred. Later in this, our meeting tonight, I will ask the village board to take a further step in confirming my appointment to, of trustee Gary Rubin to the community relations forum. Having a direct link between this body and the community relations forum will be a critical part of our work as a board in addressing these issues head on. Glencoe is a small community, but we are blessed with residents who deeply care about one another and the world. We are a community of broad thinkers and tireless advocates, and I am sure we will make a big difference in our community, in, in our society as a whole, in combating this issue. I strongly encourage our residents, our businesses, indeed everyone in Glencoe, to engage in this dialogue. That said, we can now turn to our normal business. At this point in time, I would ask for a motion to approve the following meeting minutes, provided there's no discussion. So I should first actually ask for discussion. Are there any changes? Because we have three separate meeting minutes we need to approve. The Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole for May 21st, 2020. And with respect to that minute, I would note that there is an error in the minutes. The last time that we looked at our affordable housing plan and did an update was 2015 and the minutes at one point, say 2005, when it meant 2015. So when we asked to approve them, I would ask that we include that change in the motion to approve. There are also the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from May 21st, 2020, and the Board of Trustees' special meeting on June 1st, 2020. Does anyone have any questions or comments with respect to those? If there are no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve those minutes with the change that I just referred to?
Don't move, Mulvaney.
Who is it that seconded?
Trustee Hallwax.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller. Sorry, Trustee Miller, you're muted.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Okay. Our next order of business is to discuss and take public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. In a moment, I will ask management analyst, deputy village clerk, Jordan Lester, to read the public comments on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting in compliance with the instructions that were previously published with the meeting materials. Comments that were submitted related to agenda items will be read when we arrive at that point in the agenda. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comments to glencomeeting, that's singular, glencomeeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words or less. Oh, management analyst Lester, would you please read public comments on non-agenda items if there are? Oh, Management Analyst Lester, would you please read public comments on non-agenda items if there are any?
Thank you, President Levin. This is Management Analyst Deputy Village Clerk Jordan Lester. We received one public comment on non-agenda items from Mr. Charlie Sweat, and this is his comment this evening. "In January, the Glencoe Park District agreed to donate $400,000 worth of land to the Glencoe Historical Society for the purpose of relocating the Frank Lloyd Wright Booth Cottage. This project was outside the scope of the Park District's master plan and was pursued without input from the public. For some reason, the Park District felt that historic preservation of homes was within its mandate. The Park District simply notified residents a few days before the January meeting that they would be voting on the project at a special meeting. At that meeting, the Park District and GHS said that this project would not cost the taxpayers anything. They added that the residents voicing concerns over flooding issues could rest assured that they would be addressed prior to any move. They did not present a flood control plan or budget for the project because, according to FOIA requested, neither exists. This project is now at a standstill, and last month, GHS approached the village asking for an additional $50,000 to fund the project, in direct contradiction to what they said at the January meeting. I want to express my appreciation to the village board for rejecting this shockingly tone-deaf request at a time when budget concerns are very real for both the village and the Park District. Given that the project is over budget and facing a major flood control issue, I have requested that the Park District review its rights to terminate the lease before the project becomes a financial burden for the Park District and the village. At the same January meeting, GHS stated that it intends to request certified landmark status for the Booth Cottage once relocated. If granted, this would provide full protection for the Booth Cottage and allow GHS to simply hand over the keys to the village, strapping the town with future utilities and maintenance costs. Glencoe Park District did not address this concern in the lease, but the village has the ability to address this oversight by not granting certified landmark status to the cottage should the Park District continue with this ill-conceived plan. Regards, Charlie Sweat." And President Levin, that was the only public comment that we received this evening.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business is committee reports. There was no committee of the whole meeting this evening, so I have nothing to report on that. But there was the finance committee this evening. Trustee Vrie, do you want to give us a report on the finance committee?
Yeah, thank you. So we had a meeting tonight. We went over several things. First being our, the normal agenda item of going over the monthly reports, monthly financial reports, things to highlight, general fund. So we're doing a lot more sort of detailed looks at finances of the village being in the midst of pandemic and the really economic shutdown we saw in March and April and somewhat in May and lessening now this month. So we have been really focused on how the finances look and how they are going to look. So we spent some time on the general fund. So far, we're coming in a little bit light because primarily of property taxes and then income tax and permits. But not wildly so as of yet. Some of it is timing, where there are no penalties to delaying some of your property tax payments. So that's been pushed off, but we expect the receipts at some point in the next couple of months. But the things to consider, our sales tax revenue is a three-month lag, so we actually haven't hit the pandemic really at this point, as reflected in sales tax numbers. So these are things that we're going to be looking at over the next several months and for the rest of the year and years coming. But so far, things look pretty good, all things considered. Now we'll see how it goes over the next several months. Then we went over our community improvement plan, where we just went over the scheduling of coming projects, the reduction in certain projects to make sure that you're not overspending in a tight environment. So be very careful with our capital expenditures this year in 2020. Went over the budget calendar and then finally spent a good portion of the meeting talking to our investment advisor that manages the, is the cash manager for our portfolio, and went over the investment policy statement that we've got, and then went over the portfolio. That was the meeting.
Thank you. Our trustee Miller, is there anything to report on the Plan Commission?
Thank you, President Levin. The Plan Commission did not meet. However, we do have a couple meetings coming up. A regularly scheduled meeting on the 24th of this month at 7:00 PM will be for exterior appearance review of a property downtown. And then also on our schedule on July, Wednesday, July 15th at 6:00, 6:00 PM, I believe, the Hoover Estate will appear before the Plan Commission seeking their final plat review. So that'll be on the 15th. If it turns out that that can't be accomplished in one meeting, then we've got a whole date of the following Wednesday, July 22nd, for a possible second meeting on that, after which, if it would go to the, to the village board. That is my report.
Thank you. Trustee Hallwax, is there anything new on the golf advisory committee?
So the golf committee was able to meet on Monday, June 15th, virtually. We'd canceled the last several meetings because of, after the COVID world we entered. So it was great to get everybody together to get an update on the golf course. If you consider how we're all adapting in the wake of COVID, the course was open briefly in March, then shut until May 1, but it was limited to eight players per hour, so two every 15 minutes, with zero carts, which really hurt revenues. And if you can also remember, May was also an incredibly wet month. So in order to open on May 1, the staff had to make adjustments to the pro shop for social distancing protocols, and they've done a really nice job of making the course safe to play during these virus times. So if anyone has not been to the course, I would encourage everyone to go and see what they've done. The course looks fantastic, and the patio is back open. And from everything I've seen, is doing solid businesses, restaurants are allowed to operate without door seating. Beginning on May 29th, the course restrictions were loosened, and they were able to have 24 golfers per hour and then riding on carts, although each golfer has to ride on their own cart. So from the time they opened on May 29th, they're averaging 300 golfers per day. So it's about as near a capacity as the course can handle. So that's helped close the gap on the revenue losses for the month. So the year-to-date revenues are 191,000 short of budget, but the expense savings on payroll savings are 118K, which helps negate a good portion of that. A large portion of the capital improvement budgets for continuous cart paths was delayed or deferred due to the uncertainty of the COVID-19 virus. However, in the spring, the maintenance staff was able to do a lot of this work on two of the paths in-house, which was significant savings to the village. And if you remember, the continuous cart paths will help the golf course be able to open after we have heavy rains, which seems to be more prevalent in the last several summers. So great work by the staff. So I can tell you, as a person who does golf, that the golf is really having a resurgence. It's best to last all summer. You have no sports, no Ravinia. A lot of people still working from home with flexible schedules. So we would expect to continue to have brisk crowds at the Glencoe Golf Course. My biggest concern is the stress that will happen to staff if we continue to have 300 golfers per day. And that's the end of my formal report.
Thank you for that excellent report. Trustee Mulvaney, tell me what's going on with the Sustainability Task Force?
Well, as usual, we are working to make Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community and universe, and are doing that virtually these days. We are making progress independently with separate calls, video calls on our various initiatives, which I've been reporting on over the past few years. In particular, two to highlight, one is the Eco-District Project and Analysis, which village staff has taken some time to further evaluate, and we're looking forward to advancing those discussions. And also our work with public education, our continued effort to get the word out there of the importance and the uniqueness of Glencoe's great assets, environmental assets. And, you know, along those lines, President Levin, the comments you made at the beginning of the, of this meeting are exactly aligned and, I feel, are exactly right in making Glencoe a more welcoming place as well. Maybe I'll add that to the tagline. But also to trustee Hallwax, it's, I love hearing about the golf course progress and the number of golfers and how well we're managing the course. I wonder if it would be kind of fun to report on the number of fox sightings or owl sightings or something unique about the great way that you guys are managing the course to be environmentally sustainable. And that might be a nice way to just enhance that dialogue a bit and the role that the golf course plays in supporting some of our local nature.
Yeah, totally agree. I think it's a wonderful asset to the community, and the more we can make people understand all of the multiple ways that the, that the public benefits from it, the better. So I will take that for the next meeting.
Thank you. Yes, just FYI, I have enjoyed sitting on the deck just to try and watch birds and wildlife. So there are other uses besides hitting a ball. Let's see, that, that is what I wanted to report on. I think there's another place in the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, or if now is the time, to talk about the transition of the chair spot. I'm afraid I don't have the agenda in front of me to know if we should kick that off now or do we wait a moment?
We'll wait a moment until the president's report.
Thank you. Then that's my report.
Thank you. May I have the village managers' report, please?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to the board. I wanted to report first this evening on a plan to reopen our village hall to the public. For the past three months, my reports really have focused on providing updates on the state of village operations in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. In particular, as a component of that, the village hall has been closed to the public, and the majority of our administrative staff has been working from home since Monday, March 16th, which both feels like yesterday and about a year and a half ago. From the outset, we've sought to balance service delivery to the Glencoe community with safety for our staff, and I've been very pleased with how this has worked and how, and we've received a number of positive comments, of course, from, from all of you on the board, but also from the community, that overall our service levels haven't significantly declined, displayed a complete reshuffling of day-to-day operations. I'd really like to express my gratitude to the Glencoe community for supporting the staff throughout this effort, particularly as we endeavor to adapt the village's very personal service model to one that required the incorporation of not only social distancing, but also the transition to communication, pretty much only online or via phone. In light of that, I also wanted to take a moment to thank the village president and board on behalf of our entire staff team for your unrelenting support and concern for the team's safety and well-being as we've navigated these really difficult times. I, I would be remiss if I didn't also thank the staff for their adaptability and the work that they've done to make all of this function as well as it has. I am pleased to say that after a careful planning process that's included review of best practices set forth by public health partners and a lot of engagement with our staff team, we're going to soon reopen the village hall to the public and reestablish certain in-person aspects of our service model. So starting on Monday, June 29th, which is a week from this coming Monday, village hall will reopen with limited walk-in services and public hours. The building will be open daily to the public from 9:00 AM to noon, and again from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. We're going to be reserving the hour of 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM for seniors and those who are immunocompromised. Office staff will be working on rotating shifts with time split between the village hall and working from home. For the time being, it's going to feel a little bit different when people walk into the building, both for the public and for our staff. Members of the public will be required to maintain six feet of physical distance, wear face coverings, and sign in for COVID-19 contact tracing purposes, should they be needed. Our staff will be doing all of those same things and generally also wearing masks most of the time that they're in the building, particularly if they can't keep six feet of distance from one another. Many of our village services, I should say, some of our village services may be by appointment only, but we will be taking those and scheduling those. Even though the building will reopen to the public, we do still encourage the community to conduct as much business with us over the phone or through our website as possible. I'm pleased to say that almost everything you can do in person, you can do online, and we've, we've worked hard to keep that in place. But we also realize that we are part of our downtown, part of our community, and we want to make sure that the building is available for those that may want to transact business with us. And again, I just want to reiterate that we appreciate the community's patience and understanding as we continue, as we continue to evaluate how these new processes work. I anticipate changes. We may see further changes once we get back into a routine and the state moves into phase four, particularly as it relates to public meetings and the like. But this is, this is our starting point. We'll be making this announcement tomorrow in our e-news. And again, looking forward to seeing our staff back here in the village hall and our community interacting with us in a safe way. Along the lines of, of the impacts of COVID-19, I wanted to talk briefly about Fourth of July celebrations this year. While the difficult decision was made last month to cancel our traditional Fourth of July celebrations, I'm pleased to report that in partnership with the Park District, we're working together to develop virtual or no-contact holiday celebrations for Independence Day. These events include a reimagined parade. Typically, our parade is, is handled in our downtown, and our community gathers together. Because social distancing makes that very difficult and crowd size is something we want to limit, this year, we're going to have a brief, shorter parade that comes to the community. A parade consisting of our public safety and public works vehicles, as well as Park District vehicles, will work its way through as much of the community as possible, beginning at 1:00 PM on Saturday, July 4th. Residents are encouraged to step out on front porches, wave flags as the parade passes by. This route map is being finalized. I'm excited to say, I think we're going to be publishing it tomorrow. And we are, we are doing our very best to touch every neighborhood in the community and to, we look forward to seeing smiling faces as we do that. As I mentioned, you know, our intent is to keep this a safe event. So parade vehicles are not going to stop. There's not going to be any candy or anything handed out from the parade, but we will decorate our vehicles and, and look forward to, again, waving and seeing our community as the parade passes by. As part of that, we're also working with the Park District to encourage residents to celebrate their patriotic spirit by decking out their homes and front lawns as part of an Independence Day decorating challenge. We're encouraging folks to contact the Park District, who's going to put together a map and, and publish that so that our, our residents can go out and about and see how everyone has decked out their homes in red, white, and blue. I think that'll be a really fun way for our community to enjoy the holiday. And then there are two other events that will turn all virtual this year, including the Rotary Fun Run, which is typically at 8:00 AM on, on the Fourth of July. This year, this will be a virtual run. Participants can sign up and run their two miles anytime between the Third and Fifth of July. And this will, will double as a fundraiser for the Special Olympics. of July, and this will, will double as a fundraiser for the Special Olympics. So that's something you can register for with the Park District on the Park District's website. And finally, Glencoe's Got Talent, which is always a fun event, on the Fourth of July in the morning, later in the morning at Cock Park, will go to an online virtual event starting at 11:00 AM on the Fourth of July. There are limited spots available and some age restrictions, so I don't think any of us will qualify for that, but there's going to be a lot of fun to be had to watch that and, and interact with it. So we're excited that while the Fourth of July will feel very different in 2020, that we still have the ability to celebrate and to, to do that together, even if it's, even if it's virtually or from across the street as we wave to neighbors and, and the like. So more information's on the village's website and on the Park District's website. As I mentioned, tomorrow, we anticipate releasing that parade route map and, and hope folks can enjoy the holiday with us. I wanted to just provide a brief report also on our outdoor dining programs. The last two board meetings have been focused somewhat heavily on this subject. I know I'm not alone in being grateful that almost all of our Glencoe restaurants are now offering outdoor dining in compliance with the regulations that have been set forth in Governor Pritzker's Phase Three reopening plan. The business community and in particular, our business services team have been hard at work creating these new outdoor dining programs, or, excuse me, dining options in the downtown. And in the last two and a half weeks since we, we last met on June 1st, the team has created the new outdoor dining space in the Village Court parking lot. That, while closing off a parking lot doesn't sound like it should be that difficult, we are government after all, and there are a number of things that, that get worked into that process. So it did take some time and effort, but by June 4th, we had applications out and available to our business community. Just yesterday, Valor had its furniture delivered. They'll be erecting a tent on the, on the parking lot as well in short order, and I'm just grateful to see that our businesses are starting to take advantage of this option and that is available to them. As a part of that, we mentioned this back on June 1st, we've also expanded the footprint or the allowable footprint for sidewalk seating, and many of our restaurants have taken us up on that offer, and we now see sidewalk seating that's spreading out a bit further in front of neighboring storefronts with the permission of those neighboring storefronts and providing additional outdoor dining space for, for those restaurants that, that are benefiting from that. So again, glad to see so much happening. I'll just list off Meg's, Hometown Coffee and Juice, Guildhall, Little Red Hen, and Valor are currently all doing outdoor dining in our downtown. As I mentioned, Valor is the first open in the Village Court parking lot, and then in Hubbard Woods, Hubbard Woods Plaza, Wanawato, and Frank and Betsy's are also offering outdoor seating. So we hope as residents are, are thinking about dining options, most of them are still doing their full takeout menus in, in addition, but there are some really great options here in town, and we encourage people to stay here and support Glencoe businesses first. Just two quick reminders, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have. As the finance director mentioned in our last meeting at the finance committee, earlier this spring, the village board authorized the extension of deadlines for vehicle and pet license renewals. Just a reminder, that new deadline is about a week and a half away on June 30th. Residents can renew online, we encourage you to do that. Those stickers are, are sent out very quickly after we receive the renewals. And just as a reminder, late fees do apply, starting on July 1, which doubles the overall cost of renewal. So get in before July, or June 30th and avoid those, those fees. And last but not least, as of today, I'm pleased to report that 77.5% of Glencoe residents have responded to the 2020 census based off of census data that we've been provided. That compares favorably against the state average, which is about 66.2, but not quite where we want to be, which is at 100%. So I'm encouraging residents that haven't yet responded to set aside 10 minutes and, and get your information into the Census Bureau today. Census responses help our community receive our portion of over $675 billion with a B in federal funding each year. You can find all of that information and on how to respond to the census at 2020census.gov. And again, as I said, I'm happy to take any questions on any of these or other subjects that the, the board may have.
This is Trustee Mulvaney. There were some concerns expressed by, I think it was Foodstuffs regarding the closing of the parking lot. I'm just curious if we've answered those concerns to their satisfaction.
What we are, thank you, Trustee Mulvaney. To your, to your point, the, we did receive some outreach from Foodstuffs that the closure of parking in the Village Court parking lot would be an impact to their, to their business. We had been in contact with them and we're hoping actually that they might participate in the outdoor seating program in the parking lot, but they've elected not to at this point. We have, I think to some degree, the issue may mitigate itself from the standpoint of determining how many of our downtown restaurants end up actually utilizing space in the Village Court parking lot. Right now, those spaces, if you can think of the, the aerial of that, of that parking lot that exist in the middle, have not been taken, and the overall impact on the number of spaces, particularly if those, if those are not used, should be minimal. We are ensuring that access back and forth from Foodstuffs and their neighboring properties where there's a small parking lot that feeds into the Village Court parking lot will remain open regardless of any outdoor seating options. That's also true of the parking lot between the Grand and the Shopping Center immediately to the west. So those, those access points will remain open. We have conveyed that to Foodstuffs and we'll continue to work with them to adjust footprints as necessary.
Thank you. And, and along those lines, in our prior discussions, we talked about the need to be experimenting with other options, amongst which was the closure of Vernon. I'm wondering if that has progressed in terms of ideas, or are we waiting for other indicators before we take action?
Well, I think to some degree, we're trying to do one thing at a time, and the outdoor dining in the, in the parking lot has taken a bit longer in terms of, of some of our businesses in terms, and getting their operations up and running or ordering of furniture and such. We have had some contact from Guildhall that has indicated now that though they had some initial, real initial desire to locate in the parking lot, that, that no longer may be feasible for them. They have asked about seating on Vernon Avenue and how that might work, not to close the street, but to close some of the parking spaces. Staff has been working with them, we've been communicating with them. At this time, we're not moving forward with that, with that request, to some degree because of wanting to maintain equity with other restaurants that we've been working with, but also to ensure safety in, in the downtown area. We have had some conversations with others in terms of the house in particular. We are working with them to actually locate some space in our Village Court parking lot at their request, and I think the assistant village manager will be meeting with them tomorrow to work out the final sighting for them. So that will, that will be included in our Village Court parking lot as well as some other of our businesses. I think we heard from the yoga studio at our last meeting, since that time, we've reached out to them to find if there were ways for the village to provide them with additional space. They have inked an agreement with District 35 to utilize some of the school district's property for their early morning classes. So we are working through these requests as they come through. Many of our retailers, I think, are operating well within the, the Phase Three guidelines. They've all had the opportunity to reopen since May 29th, and based off of what I'm seeing in our downtown, we've got, we've got a steady stream of traffic going into and out of our, our businesses, and I'm hopeful that the work that we're doing is going to continue to supplement their efforts as they recover from, from the COVID-19 pandemic. But we will continue to be thoughtful and work through various alternative ideas that are presented to us as they, as they come.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is consideration of an extension of the village president's declaration of emergency. And as you know, under our current declaration of emergency, it'll expire at the adjournment of tonight's meeting, and it's recommended that we extend that. And so I would like, if there's no discussion, to have a motion to approve the extension until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second?
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now at, at the point that you asked about, Peter, where we have had an outstanding chairman of the Sustainability Task Force, Elsa Bay Schwimmel-Penick, who is moving from Glencoe unfortunately right now because she's done many great things, and so she's become the retiring chairman of the Sustainability Task Force. And the first order of business that we have before us is to approve a proclamation thanking her for her excellent leadership and contribution to the community. And Peter, if there's some things you'd like to say about all that, I would welcome them.
President Levin, if I might, I just add that I believe she is also participating as an attendee and is listening in this evening as well.
Excellent.
Thank you, President Levin. I did not prepare any comments, but of course, Elsa Bay, amazing contributor to, to Glencoe. We were so lucky to have her for the short few years she was here, right away, starting to get engaged with our community, especially on sustainability, bringing an energy and enthusiasm that's unrivaled. She was an amazing leader for us. She brought fresh energy and people into the fold. She's welcoming, she meets, I think, the spirit of Glencoe in every way. Elsa Bay, we're going to miss you very much on our task force, but as I've told you, we do expect Paris to become a competitor in the universe here for the most sustainable place, and, and I, and I hope that someday we see each other out there in the stars and feel very proud of what we've done for our communities. Thank you, Elsa Bay.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say something.
Absolutely.
Oh, well, thank you so, so much. Thank you for these kind words, and I've tried to write down what the Sustainability Task Force has meant to me, and it's actually impossible. There are so many changes and movements at the moment in the village. There is more awareness, there's more interest, and as just mentioned by President Levin and Pete as well, Glencoe villagers really are caring for the world. On a personal level, it has been great working with and meeting so many great people. Thank you for that. And to be able to have the opportunity to change my thinking from me now to us later has been really wonderful and helped me a lot. The "us later" is also really becoming a part of Glencoe because of this goal to become the most sustainable village of the galaxy. Sustainability is becoming a part of the DNA of Glencoe, and Glencoe will always be a part of my family's DNA. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Elsa Bay. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation, talking at great length about what a fabulous job Elsa made?
So moved.
Second?
Excellent. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. We, we are very fortunate. Elsa Bay, of course, in her great wisdom, recruited someone to join the effort who has been terribly inspired by her, and so to fill the vacancy, although I don't think anybody can ever fill the vacancy because she did so well, but to fill the vacancy, I would ask the board to approve my appointment of Bernie Gallagher to be the new chair of the Sustainability Task Force. Any discussion? If not, may I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second?
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
All righty, I look forward to Bernie trying to fill those tremendously large shoes that Elsa Bay has left. All right. The next order of business relates to something I spoke about at the beginning of our meeting. I have nominated Gary Rubin to be a member of the Glencoe Community Relations Forum, and I would, if there's any discussion, fine, otherwise, may I have a motion to approve that appointment?
So moved.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
I'm trying, I'm trying, yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yeah, humbly, yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. I know that Gary will do a phenomenal job of representing us with the Community Relations Forum and in representing them with us, so I look forward to our moving the village forward with Gary's help. Our next regular village board meeting is currently scheduled for Thursday, July 16th, and so I wanted to remind everybody of that. Our next order of business is the consent agenda, and since this is a virtual meeting, I would ask our village manager, Mr. Corrali, to please read us the list of items that are on the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Levin. There are several items on the consent agenda. I will, I will read through them in order as they exist on the, on tonight's agenda. The May 2020 Village Treasurer's Report and Glencoe Golf Club Financial Report, the May 2020 Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club, ratification of the May 2020 Early Check Register List, consideration of an ordinance temporarily allowing the sale of premixed alcoholic beverages for carryout and delivery purchases, consideration of a resolution approving and ratifying the Electric Energy Supplier Agreement with AEP Energy Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois, for the village's street lighting accounts, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a one-year renewal of the Professional Services Agreement with H.R. Green of McHenry, Illinois, for plan review and inspection services, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Schroder and Schroder of Skokie, Illinois, for residential concrete sidewalk and curb replacement for a total cost not to exceed $50,000. And finally, consideration of a resolution to adopt the 2020 update to the Village of Glencoe Affordable Housing Plan. That concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you. Since this is a key voting matter, I'm going to go down the list of trustees and ask each one if they have any comments or questions. And I'll start with Joe. And I'll start with Joe Hallwax.
None here.
Thank you, Joe. Gail Listener.
No, no questions or comments.
Barbara Miller.
No questions or comments.
Gary Rubin.
None, thank you.
Pete, Peter Mulvaney.
A quick question for Mr. Mao. H.R. Green, I think this is the first renewal. I'm just curious if there was any significant scope changes and/or presuming, I presume that, that you're satisfied with their work, but you know, oftentimes really in these contract professional services, there's adjustments to be made. I just want to hear if there's any dissatisfaction and if there are significant scope changes.
Good question. This is, this is the second one-year renewal after the first, the original agreement was a two-year term with two one-year renewals. So we're into year four with H.R. Green. No substantive change in scope with year four. In year three, we moved to a single plan reviewer inspector, one individual that performed both functions, as noted in the, in the write-up. And he's been an excellent asset, highly regarded and respected in the field. We, we hear nothing but good reports back from the, the development community and very easy to work with for our staff. And so to answer your question, in, in summary, we've been, we continue to be pleased with the services provided by H.R. Green.
All right, thank you. No further questions. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Peter. Jonathan Vry, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Mulvaney.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next order of business is our regular business. And the first thing is consideration and action authorizing and providing for the issuance of $3 million general obligation bonds, waterworks system, alternative revenue source, Series 2020, for the purpose of providing certain improvements to the waterworks system of said village, prescribing the details of said bonds and providing for collection, segregation, and application of the waterworks system revenues to the payment of said bonds and the levy of taxes to pay said bonds if such revenues are insufficient for such payment, and providing for the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. And I'm going to ask Nikki and Mark Generinta to comment on today's sale and where we are with respect to this matter. So I'll turn it over to you, Nikki.
Thank you, President Levin. As the board may recall, from the step year 22 budget, or 2020 budget discussions, the budget did incorporate a placeholder for alternate revenue source general obligation bonds, originally scaled at $5 million and then subsequently scaled back to $3 million after additional discussions with the board. Just a timeline, a review of how we came to where we are today. It doesn't, may not feel like it, but we did start these discussions back in September of 2019, when we first started talking about the meter replacement program. Public Works gave a very thorough presentation to the village board, and we discussed again in November as part of the capital and financing plan, and again during the budget presentation. This year, we've awarded a contract to Corin Main, who is the contractor that would be responsible for running the meter replacement program that would be funded with this bond proceeds, and then also authorizing the issuance of bonds at the same time. And then, as you recall, last month, we did hold a final hearing, which is required of non-annual communities that are issuing bonds, and then also a reimbursement resolution to help the village recoup any costs that may have been expended between the time of initial acquisition of some meters or supplies or engineering work related to the water main contacts. And then lastly, the bond rating update. And very pleased to report that the village was able to reaffirm its AAA bond rating, which played a huge role in the results of the sale that happened earlier today. Just a quick review of the projects that are funded, proposed to be funded by this bond issue. Obviously, we've talked at length about a village-wide meter replacement program and a user portal that would go along with that. Also included would be water main improvements for the current budget year and next year, the village's first calendar year. And those improvements would include main replacements on Hawthorne, Long Meadow, Longwood, and Forestway Drive. And those project and costs, project costs that we have estimated for the bond proceeds is $2 million in water main replacement and approximately $815,000 for water main improvements. I am joined today by Mark Jarrett-Tina from Spear Financial. Spear has served as the village's financial advisor since, I believe, last year. We just started, this is relatively new. So I am going to turn it over to Mark to share the good news of this morning's bond sale.
Thanks, Nikki, and good evening to everyone from the board. This morning, we did hold an auction for the sale of the village's Series 2020 bonds. And we received significant interest from the bond market. We received a total of 74 bids from eight different bidders. And the winning bidder was Bernardi Securities out of Chicago with a 1.58% interest rate. It was very close, though, as a second-place firm putting a bid of 1.59%. And currently, interest rates on municipal bonds are near record lows. To put this in perspective, the village received a lower interest rate on this year's 20-year bond issue than it did on last year's 10-year bond issue. And as Nikki mentioned, the affirmation of the village's AAA bond rating really helped with this low interest rate. Annual debt service on the bonds is just going to be over $181,000 a year. And the bonds are scheduled to close on July 8th, which is when the village will receive its bond proceeds. Overall, we thought the process went very well, and we recommend that the little bid of Bernardi Securities be accepted. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thanks.
Mr. Mark, and if I may add, President Levin, earlier today, the board received a copy of the updated bond ordinance. And this was based off of the results of the bond sale earlier today. There was a bond ordinance included in the packet, which is substantially in the form of what you'll be approving this evening. But that final version, again, was sent out to you earlier today, along with the final bid results as well. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Let me walk through the trustees on that. Joe Hallwax, do you have any questions for either Nikki or Mark?
No, no questions. My only comment would be it's absolutely amazing how, I guess, cheaply we're able to borrow. So kudos to the village for maintaining its rating.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Gail Listener?
No, I, I don't. And I would mirage Joe's comments that it's really wonderful to live in a community with the AAA bond rating.
And any questions, trustee Barbara Miller? Or, or comments?
No, well, only one comment, which is to say, wonderful news on the, on the rate.
Thank you, Barbara. Any comments, Peter Mulvaney?
No. President Levin, no comment.
And, and I would say this bond did so well, it matches your sustainability goals. Any comments, Gary Rubin?
I praise indeed. No comments, thank you. Except also gratitude for all the work done by staff and our advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Jonathan Vry?
No comments or questions from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I would say that we owe a great debt to everybody that worked on it, but also it's the tremendous work that staff does day in and day out that got us that bond rating that resulted in this. So we thank you all. We, as a board, thank you for your hard work that has resulted in this. With that, I would like a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended by the version of the ordinance that we received this afternoon.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any other business before I move on? Okay. Jordan, do, do we have any public comments that have come in during the meeting that we should have read?
No, President Levin, we did not receive any additional public comment.
Thank you. The next order of business is I would like a motion for us to move to adjourn into closed session for the purpose of discussing pursuant to section 2C6, the sale or lease of property owned by the village. Section 2C21, minutes of closed sessions of the village for approval or semi-annual review. And section 2C1, the performance and compensation of the village manager. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a?
President Levin, before you take a vote on that, this is Steve Elrod. I just want to remind the board that if the motion passes and you'll adjourn to closed session, you'll exit this Zoom meeting and click in to a new Zoom meeting with the link that I sent you privately. For those watching, the village president will come back after the closed session and adjourn the regular board meeting.
Thank you, Steve. After that clarification, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Okay. I am going to leave the meeting and re-adjourn us in closed session. I mean, re-adjourn us in closed session.
Hello. Hello, hello. All right. Hello.
Hi, Larry.
Excellent, you are here. I wanted to announce that the village board empowered me to adjourn this meeting. We have finished the closed session and have adjourned back to the open session with them having empowered me to close this session. So we were at that point where everybody who's watching So we're at that point where everybody who's watching can go home, including me can stay home. I can stay home. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.